Weeks ago about this potential project known as Putnam's Meadow. And so I just wanted to talk a little bit about how we have worked with communities in the past. And we we frequently work with towns to conserve land along rivers in various ways, whether it's a out and out purchase of the property like this one could be, or we sometimes negotiate conservation easements on properties that have floodplain and river corridor protection value. So kind of the way that just in general that works with us is we we only work with willing landowners. We don't have any regulatory authority at all. So if there's a willing landowner who is interested in either selling the property for conservation purposes or interested in a protective easement on it, then we'll start a discussion with that landowner. And just to go right to this particular property, we have had a initial conversation with the realtor who is marketing the property and I told her that we would be interested in engaging in a conversation with the landowner. If if they were so willing, it's a it's a LLC corporation. So I don't even know who the individual is who is sort of the main member manager, whoever that LLC. But anyway, the realtor said that they were interested and I kind of outlined what our process is. So anytime we buy real estate, we have to base the purchase on a qualified appraisal for the property. So we always will commission an appraisal to be done. And if that appraisal number is acceptable to the landowner, then we'll go sort of to the next step and sign some some kind of site control agreement, whether it's a purchase and sale agreement or an option agreement or something where we basically have secured the right to purchase the property for a particular price for for a particular period of time. And then we will seek out funding to to make the purchase. And we have a number of different funding sources depending on what type of property it is and what type of conservation outcomes there will be. And if all goes well and we raise the money and end up purchasing the property, then and this, I think, where it's a german conversation here is we will we'll have a discussion about who really should be the long term owner of the property. We prefer, especially when we're doing public access projects where it's really a community sort of recreational asset that we prefer that we buy the property and then reconvey it to the municipality for free. Basically, we would hold an easement on the property in that situation that would kind of restrict the property from being used for non-public purposes. But we also, you know, know that there's some communities that for a variety of reasons aren't really set up to be landowners or for whatever reason, don't choose to be. And we do have a a separate land owning portion of the Vermont River Conservancy called Vermont Riverlands, where Vermont Riverlands can own properties long term that we purchase. And an example of that, I don't know if it's a little it's over in Hancock, we we bought property, which was the old Bettis Auto Land property along Route 100, which is basically a junkyard right on Route 100. And it had been just a a problem for decades as far as stuff washing into the river. So we ended up. This is a an Irene kind of funded project through the sent two rivers out of Queche Regional Planning Commission where they provided the funding, but we bought it. And it's now owned by our Vermont Riverlands LLC. And there's a public access area built on there. We pay property taxes in the towns that we own property in. So that's really a very quick kind of overview of what we do. So if this particular property Putnam's Meadow is one that the town through you guys, a planning commissioner, whatever processes seems to be a valuable conservation asset for the community, then we'd love to work with the landowner in the town and see if we can have a good outcome here. So I don't know if that made sense to everybody, but we're, you know, just the very beginning of the conversation with the landowners, marketing representative, their realtor. So any questions?
Thank you, Steve. I may just sketch out a little bit more about this particular property too, which is that in the 1960s, the Vermont Department of Fish and Wildlife bought a number of pieces of land all over the state in order to ensure recreational access for fishing game related activities. And there is a one rod strip along that piece of land that is actually owned by the Vermont Department of Fish and Wildlife. That is also true just upstream of the Foundry Bridge. So.
Another tidbit, I think, isn't that where they had the KKK meeting and burned a cross that you could talked about? Historic value.
Okay.
Sorry, I came late, but where's the Putnam Meadows? Where's what's that?
Based on Monarch Hill across from the recreate the town, the ball field on.
The seven acre parcel that's recently come on the market.
Right.
Yeah, this is the one Dana Goodnow developed. He took the remnants of the old bridge when they were redoing the bridge and he he said, I'll take that that extra concrete and he built the ramp to as access into that. So the access now is is just from obviously from 110. You know, what are what's the likelihood of being able to? I know it's problematic in many ways, but to be able to connect it to the right to the ball fields like with the with some kind of a footbridge. Is that is that legal across there? I mean, and
I would say it's highly unlikely. For one thing, you've got the fish and wildlife ownership of that outer bank. And that their own their strip of land moves if the bank moves. So that is measured there. So there is also the history of Recreation Road is that there is a bridge at the upstream and right by the town garage. There's a bridge abutment there. And that was a bridge, I believe originally went to the town meeting house, the original town meeting house. That bridge blew out three different times. And finally Recreation Road was put in to address the fact that it just was not a good place for a bridge.
Unless you had a footbridge like the fair does. Was up for the summer. So comes back down, but that's that's a big expense.
Yeah, you've you've also got that fish and wildlife ownership of the bank. So that would really and honestly, I'm not sure it would be compliant with our our flood hazard by law. That is a very active floodplain. It has flooded four times in the last 15 years that I'm aware of. A couple of times due to ice, but also on July 1st, 2017 in height of summer that that property flooded. There were horses down there at the time and they were stuck in a bunch of middle of a bunch of rising water.
So the only access is is by from 110.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I think that's true.
It just makes it just makes it difficult. You know, there's between the town and that point. It's really impossible to walk along that road. So 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 foot access is really difficult from town.
Are there other questions for Steve?
Steve, I don't quite understand, I guess. So you folks would actually approach them, you are approaching about purchasing it?
Correct.
So it doesn't fall on the town of Tunbridge to come up with the money, right?
No. Well, you know, we we work lots of different ways and lots of different communities. So we just recently, well, a couple of years ago bought kind of a similarly situated property in Bethel. Just upstream kind of from the recreational fields there in Bethel, which it was a parcel of land that again floods frequently, but it was slated for development. It was there's actually going to be a Dollar General placed on this. And so we worked with the town to sort of do a quick purchase of the property from the commercial owner and then raise the money from different sources. And the town put in a little bit of money, the Conservation Commission, I think, raised around $8,000 for that project. But the bulk of the money came from the Vermont Housing Conservation Board and a couple of other sort of funders that fund floodplain restoration projects. And then, once we pulled all the money together and could basically pay ourselves back for making the purchase, we conveyed it to the town. And so it's now a town owned property and they use it for recreational access to the river and it's haved by a local farmer. There was some enhanced buffer plantings along the river that Waver Partnership did. So I, you know, yeah, in that case, the town put in some money, but that's not a requirement for our participation. We, you know, it helps with seeking funds from other funders to see if there's, you know, some you know, some local investment in it. But we, you know, it's not a, you know, line in the sand requirement for us.
You know, it kind of sounds like a win win for us.
Yeah.
Well, what do you need? What do you need from the town of Tunbridge to?
Right now, we don't even know if the landowner really wants to move ahead. So I would say let us work our process a few more steps. Let us do the appraisal. See if the landowner is interested in selling for that appraised value. And then if the landowner is and we can sort of, you know, at least get some conditional purchase and sale agreement or something, then we we have, you know, what's called site control. We can, you know, determine the future of it. And then I think that would be the right time to come back to you guys and say, okay, we have, you know, secured the property. Here's the options for how it could be owned, how it could be managed, what kind of you know, floodplain restoration might be appropriate for the site, kind of like really talk about the details of management and ownership and that sort of thing. So I don't think there's any reason to dig into that too deeply right now because we don't even know if we can, you know, make a deal with the owner at this point. But it might be, you know, we might know one way or the other in a month or two. It's right now, it's the holdup for us is is getting appraisers. They're so appraisers are so busy right now, we can't. It just takes a while to get the appraisals done. So does that make sense? So you know, that's we're happy to kind of go ahead and kind of take the next couple of steps. And if this seems to be a future sort of conservation endgame for this, then maybe come back and talk about what those next steps might be.
Sounds good.
Great. All right, I gotta go. I'm sorry. I got a board meeting at seven o'clock. I have to get prepped for, but it's good to see you guys. Good to see you, Michael. I haven't seen you in a while. So good luck with everything. I'm happy to be a Tunbridge resident, finally, after owning land here for 18 years, finally got got moved in. So happy to be here. Yeah.
Thanks, Steve, for carving out the time.
All right, yeah. All right, I'll talk to you. Hopefully, hopefully, we'll talk more about this. So I'll see you later. All right. Bye.
All right. So part part of the reason that was moved on to the agenda, the Planning Commission and the Select Board received an email from a town resident highly recommending that the town look into purchasing that property for recreational use. So timing wise, we thought it was a decent time to add it for to the agenda for discussion and we're lucky to have the Steve living in town now. So greatly appreciate his being able to inform us. It looks like Todd Todd or Betsy's got a question.
This is Betsy. Yes, I just had a quick question. Is is that a good fishing spot? And would there be access for fishing potentially from that piece? Do you know?
That that Vermont Fish and Wildlife does stock the first branch. I wouldn't necessarily call it the the greatest fishing, but they do stock the river. The access, as as Michael alluded to, is is primarily from Route 110. So you know, there's probably a limited number of parking spots for that site. And it would need to be figured out what, you know, what kind of access is currently, it would mean crossing private property property to access the fish and wildlife land. But I believe their deed, when they purchased that property allows people to cross the the private land to reach the riverbank is the way that the deed spells it out.
Thank you.
What was the point of of fish and wildlife buying that land?
Public access to the river for for game and fishing game related. So they they purchased a bunch of sites all over the state during the 60s and 70s for for public access. Any other questions related to floodplain? Well, later in our schedule for this year, the Planning Commission has a river and floodplain night scheduled for discussion as well. This may possibly come up again, but it was more geared tonight towards the land acquisition questions and more a broad overview of conservation options in general. Our next speaker is not here yet, I don't believe, but Brian Shoup will be joining us from the Vermont Natural Resource Resources Council to discuss changes in Act 250 that have gone on over the past year. And then Michael and Jenna Lapacinski will be our final agenda agenda item this evening to discuss items related to some ideas about the Tunbridge downtown. And we've got Brian slated for seven o'clock. So we've got just a few minutes if anybody's got any other questions along these lines or anything they would like to have addressed, we might think through before before our speakers.
And I'm just curious, I know that Brian was invited by Laura. And are there other act 250 issues pending in Tunbridge that brought this on? Is it just sort of catching up with changes and that kind of thing?
It's more geared towards the the changes that occurred in in Act 250 over the last year. The only act 250 review that we've had was on Upper Pass's expansion up on Orde Way had some additional capacity on their manufacturing plant.
Hey Rudy, this is Kay.
Go ahead, Kay.
I've heard reference to logging in the town forest. Could you say a little bit about that?
Sure, or I might, I can say that there's been an active logging job going on this winter on the Drew lot of the town forest. 97 acres up Drew Road and it has been going pretty well. Jimmy Welch has been the logger working on it. Some very nice, thanks to Brenda's efforts and a few other folks, but a particular tip of the hat to Brenda. We have a very nice pile of white pine and a little bit of hemlock that are visible next to the sand pit as you're driving in. If you go down to the transfer station and all you and look up to your right, you'll see a pile of logs there that we are looking at having milled out and processed to help build a pavilion on the town garage lot. So we have placed a bid out to three different builders right now. Or an RFP to request bids for having those logs sawed and processed and prepared and then moving us towards getting a pavilion erected on the the town garage lot. Brenda, you want to add anything about the harvest?
We actually just came to a halt on the harvest. It's not done. But the road conditions have restricted the trucking out of there. So Jimmy's wrapping up and cleaning up the landing now as we speak. And Dave Paganelli, our forester is arranging. Hopefully, we can get him back next winter, kind of a rush a little bit. We're very plush on ash trees on the top, really nice ash trees. And the dismal part of this is that the ash borer is right on our town boundaries right now. And we're we're hoping to get those trees before they are not valuable for lumber anymore. Right now, the price is good. The other one on the on the garage lot, when we finally get the pavilion done, before it's done, we're going to have an unveiling of a contest in town to rename that. So it's not called the Garage Lot. So be ready for that and to jump in.
Yeah, I can. I can add a little bit to that. I'm on the Conservation Commission and Brenda, I believe you and Eliza Minucci were discussed last year. A contest for naming that town lot. Town Garage Lot. And I think I think there's been some discussion in the Conservation Commission to revive that to maybe do that for this year's town meeting.
We're not going to do it for this town meeting. I thought about it and I think what we're going to do is have it as an unveiling when the pavilion's done, when we have an open house to look at the pavilion. Then we'll uncover the new the new name at the same time.
I see. Is there a design for the for the pavilion or or is that still under part of the RFP?
Well, do we have our next speaker here? Rudy, I don't want to interrupt with him.
Yes, it looks like Brian just arrived. So we have a seven o'clock slot for him. So welcome, Brian, and thank you very much for joining us. And
Rudy, is that a new beard?
So sorry, what was that, Brian?
I'm just, I'm wondering if you're the same Rudy that I know and see at the farmer's market every Saturday.
Indeed, indeed.
I did the same thing during the pandemic. So hi, everybody. I'm Brian Shoup. I'm the Executive Director of the natural resources council. I am not in, I wasn't entirely sure what you were looking for tonight. I did not prepare a presentation. But I do, what I understand is you were interested in getting some background on Act 250, how it works, how it applies to development in different communities. And how the, you know, just to be available to ask answer any questions that the planning commission has about it. Is that okay with everyone?
Yeah, and I think Laura, you know, had noted that there had been some significant changes in the Act 250 this past year. So we were hoping to just be a little more aware, you know, broad overview sense. And I'm not sure if she explained that Tunbridge is a town that has no zoning and no, well, we have a flood hazard area, but no other zoning. And we have no subdivision bylaws.
Yeah. So and that's that's significant in how Act 250 addresses development in Tunbridge compared to other communities. Just for a little background, my natural resources council has been around since 1963. We deal with a lot of of not only state policy issues around water quality and land use and forest conservation, wildlife habitat, energy and climate action. We also provide a lot of resources to communities and have worked with different communities. We get engaged in litigation. You know, we're kind of a one of the broader missions for an environmental advocacy group in the in the state. And Act 250 has been an issue that we've been involved in since, you know, since Act 250 was enacted and I think 1970. So it's a law that's over 50 years. And Rudy, you're right, there have been some changes over the years, some significant changes, but there haven't been dramatic recent changes with maybe one exception, but there are some that might be pending. So just so folks don't, if just to give a little bit of a of an overview, Act 250 is a development review process that is administered by district commissions. And those are our commissions made up of three laypeople, three citizens within the the nine different regions that Act 250 has districts in are the nine nine districts. You guys, I believe, are in District Three. And you're the Chair of the District Commission's Tim Taylor, who's a farmer down in Thetford, I think. And he's been, he's been the chair, and I'm not sure who the other members are, but I have known them in the past. As appointed by Shumlin and reappointed by Governor Scott. I think District Three is does a pretty good job. They're they're the idea of Act 250 and the reason that it's administered by district commissions was the idea that it should be made, decision should be made locally or regionally, at least by neighbors and not out of Montpelier by technocrats. And that's been a kind of a an important foundation of Act 250 since it was enacted. It applies to different types of development and the the significance Rudy, you made about being having no subdivision regulations zoning. There are what are called one acre and 10 acre towns. A one acre town is a community that does not have a adopted town plan, adopted zoning and adopted subdivision regulation. So you need to have all three of those or you're a one acre town. And why you're called a one acre town is any commercial development on a lot of one acre or more triggers Act 250. And any residential subdivision or residential development, like an apartment building that involves six or more lots or six or more units also triggers Act 250. And the idea there is that the the smaller scale project is is warranted to have Act 250 review because you don't have the the local review. A 10 acre town is any commercial project that involves a lot of 10 acres or more or 10 housing units or 10 lots or more in a 10 acre town. So that's an important distinction. You know, some communities do adopt the zoning and subdivision regulations and there's a provision that allows them to elect to still be a one acre town. Not many communities do that. And some communities really avoid, you know, who don't want to have what they might consider an onerous local review process, just accept the fact that they're one acre towns. But that's, that's an important distinction and Tunbridge is definitely a one acre town. What the District Commission does is they review a project against what is referred to as the 10 criteria of Act 250. But there's a lot of sub criteria. So it's really more like 33 or 34 criteria. But there's a lot of sub criteria. So it's really more like 33 or 34 criteria. They deal with environmental issues like air quality, water quality, stormwater, wetlands protection. They deal with traffic. The criteria deal with community impacts on the, the ability of the community to provide services or to provide educational services. So a large residential development doesn't overrun your school system. And, and probably for a one acre town or really for any community, one of the most important criteria is conformance with the town and regional plan. That it's that Act 250 does look at what your town plan says and, and determines whether or not you, you know, the project complies with it. And I can get into a little bit more detail of that. It's important that your town plan provide clear guidance to the developer and to the District Commission in order for them to make a determination that a project complies to it. And then also there's, there's Act 250 allows different other entities, parties to have status and standing in Act 250. And party status is oftentimes an important kind of wrestling match when groups like BNRC want to get involved in a project. We have to, we have to justify our, our participation that it's an air, it's an interest to our mission and that we have members who are affected by the project. The town though is an automatic party to Act 250. The Planning Commission can weigh in on any Act 250 process, project in your community. And the Select Board can as well. You both have party status. So I have seen incidences where the, the Select Board and the Planning Commission didn't necessarily agree on what the District Commission should be reviewing or, or what their decision should be. Typically there's some coordination within the community, but the town is a party, as is the Regional Planning Commission to Act 250. So that's, that's Act 250 in a nutshell. It has been changed over the years. The most significant change was probably in 2002. Prior to that, since Act 250 was enacted, appeals of district commission decisions, parties could appeal their decision, went to what was called the Environmental Board. That was a nine-member citizen panel that heard the appeal and then their decision was appealed straight to the Supreme Court. In 2002, the Environmental Board was eliminated and it was replaced by the Natural Resources Board. And appeals at that point didn't go to the Natural Resources Board. They went to the Environmental Division of the Superior Court. So two judges basically took over for the Environmental Board in, in hearing, hearing appeals. And one of the changes that is in the works and it's likely not supported by this administration. So I'm doubtful that it will become law. But the House is now, will be voting within the week on a bill that would return the appeals of Act 250 decisions to an environmental review board. A smaller, more professional group of five people appointed through a judicial nominating system. And, and eliminate, and take that appeal process away from the, the court. It also, it also has other administrative changes to strengthen the District Commission process. Ever since Act 250 was, was formed, district commissions get paid $50 a day for their time reviewing projects and, and sitting in hearings and overseeing hearings. And there's I think a recognition that, that their, their contribution to the process is more valuable than that. So there is some effort made to kind of change how district commissioners are supported and reimbursed for their, 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 their efforts. Another set of changes is coming out of a Senate bill. Also, that doesn't seem to have a lot of administration support, but it would change a couple of things. It would change just some of the criteria of Act 250 to create a forest fragmentation criteria. For several years, the state, the Division of Forest Parks, Department of Forest Parks and Recreation, BNRC, and a lot of folks have raising, been raising concerns about the fragmentation of our forest lands and the impact on a lot of resources, economic resources, the ability to have a forest products industry, environmental resources like wildlife habitat and water quality, cultural resources like access to the land and hunting and recreation and trails. So it would also change jurisdiction. Between, between, I think it was about 1982 and 2002, there was a, an additional jurisdictional trigger that any road of over 800 feet also triggered Act 250. And a road was defined as a, a road, you know, access to three or more lots. And it was, it was a flawed criteria because there were a lot of loopholes that people could build around. They were building, you know, seven, two 790 foot roads instead of, of, you know, one 1500 foot road. This proposal would change the trigger to a cumulative construction of 2,000 feet of road or driveway to try to kind of rein in the scattered residential development on hilltops and mountains and whatnot around the state. And again, that's, that's a controversial provision that I'd be surprised if it went into law, but it is part of a bill that's, that's happening now. So that, that's, yeah, that's Act 250 in a nutshell. And I'm not sure the level of development in, in Tunbridge, what you guys have experienced as far as Act 250 process. I'd be curious if, if you have had many projects and whether the Planning Commission has kind of participated in the process.
It's not, there's not been a ton of them. And Michael, I think you were probably better about bringing them to the Planning Commission when we were meant to be reviewing them. The Planning Commission is the only review board in town. And it's been relatively sparse as, as to what we've ended up reviewing. The primary issue that came up in the last period of time was the proposed development for the Four Corners development, the Nuvistas project. So that got our, reawakened our interest in Act 250.
That project got our attention too.
Brian, I have a question for you. What, what, is there anything that, that worries you about, about, you know, changes or, or, you know, because I know people complain about the permitting process in, in, in the state. And but yet, Act 250 has saved the state in, in many ways over, over the years. But are there any, any things on the block that, that worry you in the future or talk about changing?
Yeah, there's a couple of things. One is that Act 250 actually does not apply to much residential development. We did some analysis a few years ago. We looked at, I think, 22 different towns and found that about three, less than 3% of all residential subdivisions that involved about 7% of the new housing lots created were subject to Act 250. And that six, six lot and 10 lot cap is actually relatively high compared to what's happening on the ground where most subdivisions are two, three, four lots. And the, that, that is resulting in a lot of the fragmentation of our natural resources. And that's the, the justification or the, or the, the motivation behind the, the this, the recreating the road rule to get at these long driveways and long roads that are, you know, punching into farmland and forest land. Another concern is, is there, there's a big debate in Montpelier about locational jurisdiction. And we have a lot of designation programs. We've got a village center program. We've got a downtown development program. We have growth centers which are very rarely used. And we have these neighborhood development areas which are associated with village centers in downtowns. And there was an agreement a couple of years ago that we should increase the number of units that trigger Act 250 in some of those areas. Because there's some vetting when they get designated ahead of time, but there has been an attempt to push more and more exemptions in these locations without some kind of upfront review. And there, there's some legislation this year that would, that would increase the cap in some of those areas in, in order to deal with the housing problems in the state. So, you know, we're trying to work out you know, with other stakeholders, make, let's make sure we do that right and not end up with exemptions that will have, you know, undue or unanticipated implications for small towns who don't have any of their own regulatory review. And actually today, there was consideration of a bill that is very concerning. There has been a I, I think a justified attempt to help farms with diversification, with adding extra revenue streams that they might need. But there is a proposed exemption that would, that would exempt from both zoning and Act 250, anything less than an acre that's an accessory to a farm, but accessory is not very well defined. And it, it could conceivably be a 40,000 square foot performing arts center on a small farm at the end of a dirt road. And remembering, and, and a farm is not necessarily a vegetable farm or a dairy farm. It could be six horses on somebody's property. So that's something that, that is alarming to me that, that's being considered now and we're working on that. You know, and I also just think the administration of Act 250 has become politicized. And I think the Environmental Board was not necessarily a very political board. They were more kind of immune from a, a particular governor interfering in their decision making. And the Natural Resources Board is very much an agent of the administration. So I didn't want to go back to if it, the town plan is a really, really critical document for a community who doesn't have their own regulations. And there's a lot of, you know, I'm not, there's a lot of reasons that towns decide not to have zoning, not to have subdivision regulations. And they're often, you know, it's, it's a town by town basis. You guys need to decide what's right for your community. And I, I, as a, as a one-time community planner, completely respect that. But what's important is if you do want to have your town plan be an important consideration of Act 250 decisions, you need to have clear policies in it. And, and what past precedent has said is the policy has to be clear and unambiguous to guide the actions of an average person. So basically if you say, we don't think you ought to do this in this area, that's really not clear. That's, that is ambiguous. That is unclear. It's important to say, we don't want this in this location. You know, we want to protect this resource. So that plan language, it's, it's, it's often easy to water down by wanting to say, well, we don't want to be too prescriptive. But the less prescriptive it is, the less standing it will have in any Act 250 case. And that's as you work on your community plan, that's just an important thing to, to, to understand. The other any other questions or anything I didn't cover?
So you, Brian, you had mentioned the pending changes and was that the reference to the, the board and those possible changes with the judges and that shift going on?
Yeah, I, I would not be, I would not, you know, if they were to become law, I'd probably be surprised. A couple of years ago, my organization worked with the administration on a pretty comprehensive set of, of, of update of Act 250. And it was controversial. We took a lot of heat for it. You know, we think, think that it was important to bring all sides together. We all, you know, we're not always in agreement with the Scott administration. I don't remember when we've ever been in an agreement with any administration on all issues, but we did try to work out a, a set of compromises. And I think we did a good job, but it turned out to be very controversial. And some of the governance, the administrative pieces were dropped, but the House did pass a pretty comprehensive overhaul of the law that was pretty good, but it never, it, it was passed late and never was adopted by the Senate. And I think that there's, it might have in hindsight, it, it might have made people, our lawmakers a little reluctant to try to bite off a big package of changes like that again. But we feel as though there are, the update is important. You know, we, we, the forest fragmentation is an issue that wasn't around when Act 250 was passed. Climate change wasn't an issue when Act 250 was passed. We didn't have the same robust agency permitting process when Act 250 was passed. A lot of the, the, the criteria around water doesn't really reflect contemporary science as well as it does. So we are still hopeful that someday there's going to be an update, but it, but you know, Michael, you, you, I agree with your point that Act 250 has served the state well. It has preserved a lot of our resources and character. And I argue, and I think we have documented this in the past, that it has not been a hindrance for economic development in the state. In fact, there was a study out of MIT in the nineties that showed it, 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 it may have stopped the booms from booming too high, but it also stopped the, the, the down trend, trends, the troughs from sinking too low. It kind of created more stability than some of our neighboring states. I'll mention New Hampshire, who, you know, booms big and then crashes. And we, Vermont has not experienced that to the same extent. So whether you agree that that's a good trend or not, I think that's, that has been an impact of Act 250.
Brian, you mentioned the forest fragmentation. Of course, that's been coming into our conversation. I'm not quite sure how that, I don't know if we're sure how that blends in with our town plan. I know we have to address it. Are you one that can summarize it a little bit?
Yeah. So a couple of years ago, Act 171 was passed. And that required added a requirement to town plans and regional plans to plan for the conservation of forest blocks and connectivity of those blocks. And you guys are in the Two Rivers, Otaqueche region. You, you are lucky because of that. You get good support from the RPC who understands that law. We had, prior to the enactment of Act 171, had created a, a community guidebook for forest conservation and habitat protection. We're about to release an update of that, that addresses Act 171. And it, it provides regulatory and non-regulatory tools and strategies for a community to use for forest conservation and habitat connection, connectivity. And this update is going to, going to have a a section on Act 171 and its implementation. But I'd encourage you to follow up with me. We're going to be distributing that through the regional planning commissions. But that, that, that new kind of planning for forest conservation is a new requirement for communities who want to have a town plan.
And I'll just add to that, that the Conservation Commission does have it on their radar to to delve into that for, as an advisory to, to the Planning Commission and the Select Board to see what what we need to do as a town or what we can do and that kind of thing. So, so that's, that's on our agenda, but it's not, we haven't really done any, any work on it yet.
That, that's great to hear that. I'm, I'm on the Select Board here in Waitsfield and our Conservation Commission, I think for the first time, worked closely with our Planning Commission on the Act 171 implementation. And it, it was, it was a good process. Everybody's really pleased with, with what looks to be the outcome in draft form. So.
Well, maybe we'll be contacting your Planning Commission and Conservation Commission to see, see how things went there. Yeah.
But again, I do want to, I, I can't speak highly enough about Two Rivers, Otaqueche. I don't know. Hopefully you've had good experience with them. I'm not stepping in anything, but from my experience, they're, they're really a, a, a good service provider for the, for their communities.
Yeah, I've got nothing but good to say about them. I know I use them as an emergency manager all the time. Yeah, I've got nothing but good to say about them. I know I use them as our, an emergency manager all the time.
Yeah, well, Devin Geiger is like, is the emergency management RPC guru in the state, so.
Thank you.
Anything else? Did that, did that answer your questions? I, I, I'm going to be really honest with you. Um. I looked at my calendar today and realized this meeting was tonight and I had a busy day, but. I, I was hoping you weren't looking for a dog and pony show.
Oh, I think this was perfect. It really uh, addressed, I think, uh, kind of overview that we were really looking for. Um, we've just gone through a challenging revision of our town plan and um. Know that the forest fragmentation in particular is something that we want to be concentrating as we start to move forward. Um, but other pieces as well. So this was extremely helpful and we greatly appreciate your carving out the time.
Oh, no problem. I appreciate you being asked. So. If that's it, I'll.
Have dinner.
Let you guys, actually I'm smelling dinner.
Thank you, Brian.
So much. Seeing you at market before long.
Yes, I'm looking forward to that. Bye.
Take care.
All right. Well, that was, that was hugely appreciated. And I see Jenna has arrived as well. Thank you, Jenna, for carving out some time. And Michael, um, and we are going to hear from them about some ideas about the Tunbridge downtown area.
And uh, do I have, uh, can I share a screen? Do you know, uh, that's a permission? That's. I, I, you have to allow that, I guess. I don't know if that's you, Israel.
That, yeah.
Yeah, I, I just did it, Michael. Shining.
Okay, okay, good. Uh, so it's going to just take a second for me to orient with the um. Um, with the, with the, with the PowerPoint that I have, but I do want to um, make sure you, uh, to introduce Jenna. Uh, she lives on uh, with her husband Brian on the lower end of Monarch Hill Road. Uh, they moved here four years ago and the town is really lucky to have um, both of them. Jenna, uh, well, I'm going to let her introduce herself, but um. Uh, it, it, uh, we, we, she's had a child two years ago, I believe, and. Um, once she gets a little older, we're really looking forward to Jenna being fully involved in so many committees.
Yeah, so um, so as Michael mentioned, my husband and I moved to town about four years ago. We have, we have a two-year-old, um, which accounts for most of our evenings right now, but. Um, during my professional hours, I work for the Preservation Trust of Vermont. And so I do field service for them, working with communities all across the state who are looking to revitalize their downtowns and village centers. Um, so I see a lot of the challenges that small communities like Tunbridge face in terms of, you know. Future thinking and, and figuring out not only how to preserve what makes them important, but how to look forward in terms of economic and community development. Um, and I get to see a lot of, you know, great ideas and some of the challenges that communities encounter in the process of trying to make those ideas a reality. And so I think that. That's kind of the lens in which I was looking at a lot of the um, stuff that Michael and I will talk about, but I'm excited to be here. It's nice to see you all and. Um, nice to see some other faces from Monarch Hill Road too, so.
Yeah, four of us, um, uh, okay, I am going to uh, work on. Making this work. Uh. Do you see a slide that says Tunbridge Village Planning Ideas? Okay, um, so, um, you know, Tunbridge, as we all know, since we live here, is a beautiful place to live. Um, we, we value it and generally want to maintain a rural character and lifestyle. We want to have low taxes and we want to have open space to move around. Uh, the planning ideas being presented are foremost for the residents who. Uh, who live here, but also with an eye towards sharing what we have um, with, with, with visitors. Uh, as we know, Vermont is driven in large part by tourist economy. Uh, people like to visit here. They marvel at how people can make a living or not, and uh, they stay a few days and then they head south again. Um, so we who live here have something they want, at least in the short term and um. Uh, and, and that is sort of a, a slice of view, a peek at a rural life. Uh, you know, into a somewhat ag agriculturally centered community, the small town feel, you know, open space and, and, and this connection. Um, to the natural world, which of course they may not have from, you know, when, from where they come from. So. But, but we all value that, uh, people that live here and, and people that visit here. Um, so I'm going to get uh, right to um. Uh, well, recently, as you may know, I'm, I'm on the um, uh, I represent Tunbridge to, to Rivers, uh. Regional Commission and uh, just last month, uh, the town plan, Tunbridge Town Plan was reviewed by two, two rivers and approved. Uh, and that's a good thing. Um, but this is um, uh, so this is something. Some, some text from their. Sort of their, well, their review process. So in the italics are their question and they, these are standard questions for all town plans. And then the end, I, the uh, non-italicized, is their particular uh, response. To the Tunbridge Town Plan. So, so here the question is, um, is consideration being given to the use of resources and consequences of growth and development? Yes, they think the plan recognizes that Tunbridge is a prime candidate for growth. And encourages controlled and orderly growth, uh, that doesn't compromise Tunbridge's rural character. And this point about not compromising rural character and, and being involved in, in, in ag, you know, uh, celebrating the ag. Is, comes up again and again. So then I'm, I'm jumping around here, but under the specific goals, one C. You know, our public investments, you know, and I talk about infrastructure, you can read it there and um. And so this was, I thought this was an important point in, in, in gen, gen, genism, my talk and that it, um, again. That, that, that public investment such as improvements uh, to one ten and other places are encouraged and endorsed. As long as it doesn't endanger the character of the village center. So obviously we, we have a high. Um, threshold when it comes to preserving uh, what the place looks like. Um, now the main point of this four A, again, jumping around is that last line, uh, providing safe. You know, does the plan provide that highways, air rail and other means of transportation be mutually supportive, balanced and integrated? And then I'm jumping down to the last sentence there, providing safe travel via sidewalks, crosswalks and bike paths. Is supported but could be strengthened in future plans with policies and actions. And that's one of the things we'll be talking about. Then in the discussion part, jumping all the way to the bottom um, of, of, of the two rivers review. Um, you know, they like it. They said it's improvement from the twenty seventeen town plan, which. If I recall, got hung up in some, some review there, but that did finally get passed. Um. You know, uh, they, they, there, there were two things that they, that they made comments about. One, we all know about the childcare providers in Tunbridge, that that's, it's an issue here in Tunbridge, but also. You know, many towns around here. Um, but the point number two um, is, is really what I wanted to get to here. Um, they were kind of critical um, about uh, that the plan lacks guidance as to how Tunbridge may encourage economic growth. Uh, Tunbridge recognizes the most residents work out of town while Tunbridge encourages small businesses and. Industries that enhance the rural character of the town. There's no concrete plans in place to spur economic activity. So the, 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 they're saying, you know, think about that, folks, and, and maybe do better. So, um, you know, things are looking up. Here's some archival pictures and all. But both stores are planning to reopen in town. The library is fast becoming a town center with expanded activities and presence. And federal money is heading to the towns of Vermont, uh, including Tunbridge. And so this may be a good time. For, for, uh, for, for, we're to look at improvements for residents and visitors. For to, for, especially with infrastructure and planning initiatives. So look at the, look at the lower right picture there that there's. If you look at the, on the parcel maps and we'll see this, there's a tiny pit of land across from the, from the, um. That's owned by the store that whoever owns the store owns this tiny bit of land across one ten. And I guess there used to be land there, but it's pretty much gone there, right? Right, Rudy? It's just the bank now. But I thought that was an interesting picture, probably from the forties or something. Okay, getting into some of these ideas. Um. So, so one of the things is uh, making, making the tongue, the village itself more inviting for locals and villagers. Specifically making it more walkable, that there are sidewalks that um, that, that go someplace, but then they stop. So. So this idea that connecting to, to points north from the village um, would helped uh, get to the recreation areas. Uh, the town forest and possibly river access as we talked about. Um, you know, and, and I know that South Royalton has, is in the middle of a sidewalk, actually sidewalk, uh. Planning thing they've hired and I don't, they must have got a grant to do it, but they've been, they've been thinking about how to make it more walkable, friendly. The, the flow of traffic, the flow of people walking. And so it may be something that Tunbridge may want to consider. We don't have the. The traffic, of course, the foot traffic and all, but, but, um, but I think that there are ways that it could be, Tunbridge could be made more walkable. I don't have the answers, but. I think that professionals would. Um. Uh, signage, uh, and interpretive panels. This might be a little bit down the road here, but. But um, if, if, if we do want to, um, you know. Think of, of Tunbridge as a place, as a destination, then um. Then, then this will be, this will be helpful to, 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 to visitors. Uh, I'm going to let Jenna take, take this one. Um.
Right. So one of the things that we hear quite a bit when communities are excited about the idea of like a restaurant or cafe or nowadays a brewery, um. Wastewater is always the challenge, the initial challenge that most communities, if they don't have a municipal system, don't really have the capacity to allow for that type of. Economic development. And so that's, you know, an early and expensive hurdle that they have to face when talking about those types of businesses. Um, and I, I know that's, you know, it's an, it's an issue in Tunbridge as well and. Um, if I'm not mistaken, the, the store in the center of the town, well, it can function as a store and I think probably some takeaway options if they wanted to look at. Um, actually doing a cafe with, with sit-down seating, even probably on a small scale, they're going to have some issues with their, with their wastewater system. And so. It's a really good time to be looking at that type of, you know, infrastructure. There's money available at the state level to support planning. For wastewater systems, especially for communities that don't have systems right now. And, you know, between the money that's coming through with the infrastructure bill, the money that's come through. Um, both with ARPA funding and other COVID relief money. I mean, it's, it's a really good time to be thinking about wastewater planning and that type of infrastructure improvement. Um, there's a couple different federal grant programs that can support this type of work and it's been a conversation that's been happening at the state level a lot over the past. Five years or so and is, is certainly going to increase as more money becomes available. Um, and I know, you know, right now. Probably the ideal commercial buildings in the village center are, are privately owned. And so thinking maybe the Creamery Building and, you know, and or the Mill Building. And I would imagine that if those were ever to kind of convert back into commercial or mixed use, that. Having some plan around wastewater would be, you know, a really positive step in the right direction. So it might be a good time to explore that. And, or at least look at the planning and then, you know, even if nothing happens for the next few years, at least the, the town has an idea of what it would cost to do some of that work.
Um, next, uh, town forests are beginning to take shape. Uh, there was some conversation earlier about that. Um, in this, I'll be showing some maps later, but perhaps there's, there's a way to create a spur from the village to, to, to the Drew Lot. Through um, a, a public-private trail partnership, which has been talked about again and again, but um. There are actually four parcels. You'll see that, that they go from route one ten and touch the Drew Lot. Uh, more ideas. Um, so Tunbridge, you know, this is, this is one of my dreams come true here, but. Uh, it's poised becoming an I-based and food-producing town. There's more interest in, in, in this, uh, with the White River Land Collaborative, uh, buying. You know, the old house farm there. Um, uh, you know, keeping. From the days I was on the planning commission, you know, this idea that if we keep land working, then um, as long as it's worth more for, for ag. Uh, than for development, then that, that may, that may help the town sort of maintain its open space. Uh, the other thing is agrotourism is um, is, I don't know really a lot about it, but um. But there is some, some, from my friends at White River Land Collaborative, there is some interest in agrotourism. Um, as a, as a way to, and uh, uh, you know, add value added, have people. Be more in touch with producers. Uh, this idea has been kicked around for a while. Um. And, you know, Gary and I put up that little bulletin board next, thanks to the spawnables generosity on their land next to the post office. And then it, it, it rotted out after whatever, ten or twelve years. So I know there's been some talk and Brenda has been involved in this, but. Perhaps putting up a, a kiosk at the library across the road, which is town land. Um, because uh, it could have an area map, uh, local attractions, farmsteads, points of interest. Um, you know, bike, bike routes, that kind of thing. And the other thing I've, I'm really. Gotten in like, I, that I really find valuable or, or Q O, QR codes, you know, on. Something like that where people can just tune into, you know, they just take a picture with their phone and they, they, they're at the town website where they're at. You know, whether the local restaurants or something like that. So, so the, a bulletin board would, um, would help both with um. Uh, locals and visitors. Um, and this again, so it's a familiar theme tonight, but um, developing river access. I mean, we've got this river that flows on the length of, of the town and uh, there's a couple of spots to get to it, but um. But, but another potential pro- public-private partnership project and boy, that's a lot of peace. Uh, but, but maybe, you know, this could happen in association with the fairgrounds, you know, and I know Betsy, um. Geysers has, has had this idea and I think it's a good one to create, you know, is there, is there some kind of a, almost like a kayak canoe? To float trail uh, down the river, at least, at least to the south Tunbridge area, you know, where, where people could, could use the river. Um, to be on, be literally on the river. Uh, so we don't really need to talk about this. This is uh, uh, the seven acre parcel that um. That Steve Libby spoke about earlier, um, but that, that does have um, uh, good potential. Um, this is something that came up at the last planning commission meeting and um, possibly because I brought, brought it up with some folks. But the idea of a charging station in town that would then become a short-term destination for folks who, who need to uh. Uh, you know, in Vermont, you might not be able to make it from one end to the other without charging at some point in the middle. Uh, so I actually have been um, in touch with Alan Howe several times about this. I'm going to be presenting. To the um, the Union Agricultural Society Board in, in April about the idea of. Perhaps putting a um, a charging station um, for EV cars. Uh, somewhere just out of town. And when we have a map, I'll show you what I'm thinking there. Um, and he's, he seems to be open to the idea. It could be, um, it could be, um, you know. Develop some revenue actually for Union Agricultural Society year round.
And I just, um, could, do you mind if I make a comment about the EV charging station? Um.
Go ahead.
There is a um. A current trend toward electric snowmobiles. And possibly also electric um, ATVs and we're looking at ATV. Usage increasing on, in town and on town roads. And I wonder if that. There could be promotion of a charging station for snowmobiles and possibly EVs. EV ATVs. Um, possibly at the North Tunbridge store. Um, just something to think about that, that. That would, I think, make snowmobiling and ATV use a lot more.
Quiet.
Thanks. A lot of people.
All right, um, I'm going to toss it to, to Jenna again. This is uh, part of her area, so.
So, um, thinking to the, you know, the entity or the organization that would. That would move a lot of these projects forward. I think it's, it's really important to have municipal support when you're talking about these types of projects. Um, but sometimes there's not the capacity within the municipality to, to do a lot of the work. Um, and so we've been seeing more and more community trusts pop up specifically. And so we've been seeing more and more community trusts pop up specifically around our the community supported enterprises. So um PTB refers to a community supported enterprise. We're typically talking about like a nonprofit owned general store cafe, thinking of the Albany General Store, Peachum Cafe. East Callis and Elmore are both in the in the process of reopening their general stores as as CSCs. And really just looking at having, you know, a community nonprofit own the real estate in the equipment, which opens it up to fundraising and, you know, possible grants. And it also gives communities control over their own destiny in a lot of ways. They get to make decisions about what's important to. You know, the long term sustainability and vitality of their town and and they can own real estate to help make that happen. And then lease that real estate out to a for profit entity to to run whatever business meets the town's needs. And a lot of times we see it being a general store because that's, you know, an area where private enterprise isn't always successful in small towns. It's really hard to turn a profit and it's an enormous amount of work to do it. And the public private partnership there works well for some communities. And so I think that's a potential um option when we start talking about economic development is is to have uh whether it's a a new community trust. Or um a subset of an existing nonprofit that has a broad enough mission to really encompass most community and economic development work. And so maybe it is something like, you know, purchasing a building in town and and rehabbing it into, you know, mixed use with some commercial space on the first floor. Or and, you know, a little bit of rental housing on the second floor. Or maybe it's something like providing river access or doing streetscape improvements. Really, the sky is the limit and it it's really customizable to whatever um the town wants it to be. And I think there would be a lot of possibilities for overlap both between the community trust and and the town. But also, you know, there's a lot of really well established nonprofits working in the community. And so making sure that everybody was kind of working in tandem and moving in the same direction. I, you know, I think there would be some strong potential there. And, you know, just looking at like the White River Land Collaborative and all the great work they've been doing, they're doing that kind of all on the under the umbrella of ABC. And, you know, I think ABC's mission is is really, you know, critical to the long term success of the of the community in the region. But I I don't know if ABC and Michael, you can correct me, I don't know if they're um well established to work with buildings and structures. And I think that that's where a lot of, you know, economic development happens in village centers is kind of around the core of the village center. And that's where a community trust might be um more helpful in kind of working on those types of projects, the built environment projects. And it also helps. Go ahead, Michael.
No, go ahead.
I was saying, I think it also helps in terms of the the division of responsibilities. It allows people who are really good entrepreneurs and business minded to focus on business and not have to necessarily worry about maintaining the building. And it allows nonprofits that are probably pretty well set up to do, you know, building maintenance and public program with not have to dive into the the nitty gritty of. Either running a business or running whatever entity else, you know, is happening in that space. And so it's it's that kind of the multiple P's, like Michael said, the public private partnerships. Those those seem to be what make these types of projects successful, especially in smaller communities where where the private part of it is a lot harder to come by.
Yeah, and um you know, the um I I I was doing some work of well. The the this idea of a community trust actually came up with the with the the Tunbridge Store as a possible um solution before it was purchased by. By um uh this guy, John Houston. So so this idea, there are some folks in town who are who are interested in this and and it's just something to be explored. I think it I think it may 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 work in in some areas here. So let me see. Next. Okay, I'm gonna get into some some apps and stuff like that. Uh I don't think I have, oh boy, I don't have control of my mouse, so I can't point. But uh let's see, everybody knows, uh I I hope is is oriented here um to this. One thing I I'd like to point out is that the in terms of the sidewalks, oh, I wish really wish I had my pointer. But um you see the Tunbridge Store, uh and it says temporarily closed there. But um from that point, pretty much to the bridge, almost to the bridge. There is no, there's no sidewalk at all. There's nothing, there's no way really comfortably to walk there. And and, you know, again, I don't have the answers, but I think I think it's worth exploring, looking for answers as to how to get. A walking from from the village, you know, even to Strafford Road. That that um uh I I think it, I think it it's just cutting off uh a a whole part of the village. You know, of course, you can go Spring Road to Mill Road and then to the bridge, there is a sidewalk there. But um you know, it's I think it's worth thinking about, not that I have the answers. And and here are some pictures taken just the other day when we, like yesterday, when we had snow. We don't today. Um so this obviously is is heading um is heading north. And um the sidewalk, you see the white barn there on the left, that's about where the sidewalk begins again. And then it goes um uh you can see it on the left in the picture in the upper right. Uh at the bridge, there's a sidewalk on that side. And then it it ends, even though it looks like you could almost walk uh over in front of their Mimi's wall there. But but so thi- this is the lay of the land of for that. And it's, you know, again, there's gotta be solutions. I don't know it, but it's worth looking into. Here's looking uh south in the same area, you can see in the upper left that the sidewalk is beautiful, clear. And there's quite a nice view actually from from the bridge there at the the upper right, looking into the down down river. And and then the other two pictures on the bottom will show the progression. The sidewalk ends about again at that white barn. And then there's sort of space there um in front of the two brick built uh houses. But um but it's right in like those houses are right on the road. So I I I don't know, but but the 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 that's that's what we have right now. And then uh going a little further to, you know, people do walk along this this curve, as we all know, and get a little white knuckles as a result of driving along there. If there's a truck coming and there's somebody walking and you're going in the opposite direction. Of course, people walk right down, you know, Spring Road there and that that's that's not a problem towards the bridge. Uh okay, um now I'm just gonna get into some some parcel maps here. Again, I don't have my pointer, I apologize. But um the two town forests are seen here. I'm gonna show you another map that uh but you can also see uh the Drew Lot is that large. Well, this, well, this this will, this is the shape of it. Now remember that shape, so it it's in the lower center part, that's the Drew Lot. And you can see those um uh lots coming off of Route one ten uh that touch the Drew Lot. And, you know, again, this would be a public private partnership, but wouldn't it be nice if we could if we could walk from town to the town forest? For recreation. Um and who knows? I know that uh there there are some landowners there, some of them have been quite generous in the past. But but that's just throwing it out there as as a possibility. Uh oh, here's a detail of 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 that area. And showing those lots. Uh this, it's kind of moot, but this is that seven acre parcel. That big spot in the middle, uh that smooth green, looks like a golf course green. And you can see where it's in in relation to the recreations, the the fields there. And uh and Rudy, I'd love you to point out where that, well, maybe on this map, th- this shows the parcel map. I don't know which one is the, which is the land that the um. That the that Vermont Fish and Wildlife own, is it is it right across from where it says Tunbridge Recreational Field? Do you know that, Rudy?
Sorry, didn't unmute. Um it's the field northwest of the Tunbridge Recreation Field, so on the opposite side of the river.
Oh.
The next parcel up.
So it's on the one ten side of the river?
Correct.
Uh huh. And what about that parcel that's that's where it says Tunbridge Recreational Field? And then you have the the Recreation Road and then there's another skinny parcel?
That is privately owned.
All right. So anyway, so, you know, I I I would, I mean, I know that it's it would be a a engineering marvel to um try to create some kind of. Even as Brenda had mentioned, you know, seasonal um access from the recreational field to to that parcel. If it comes to pass that it comes into town ownership. But anyway, um you know, can always dream and and think and pray for money, that kind of thing. This is, this is, you know, part of downtown Tunbridge or whatever them. And um one thing I wanted to point out here, again, I can't point it out really, but see where it says Fairgrounds Road and one ten where that intersection is. That is, of course, the um the Creamery um and the former fire station. And as you could see in this, it really does sit in a very strategic part of town. It's right in, it's right in town. And right now it's being used sort of sporadically as a as a as a house. But, you know, this parcel and the mill building, I that they privately owned, I I I understand that fully well. And I uh uh but they will not always be owned by the present owners and they may come up for sale. And to Ja- uh Jenna's point about a community trust, you know, it's the kind of thing that, you know, if and when. Then um then then perhaps that those those are strategic buildings uh and strategic parcels that that should be considered. And I just want to also point out uh on the left side where it says Tunbridge World's Fair, that's the headquarters, of course, where this the office. And across from that, where it it looks like in the picture, those the those those are trailers. Or um uh RVs, I guess, you know, that's I I that is a potential site for um for uh EV charging, I think. Again, uh Alan would have his opinions on that and and the board, but um it's possible it's not too far off the the main drag. Power is nearby and uh they would lose some spaces there. But I think it's maybe three, two or three spaces is what typically gets used for those. Um, okay, and here is uh here is that the the outline of that parcel. Which I I don't know, Rudy, you would be able to say some, but the listed value is seventy two thousand, no, eighty seven, sorry, close to eighty eight thousand for that. Okay, the other the other piece of land is three point two acres and this is the mill, um the mill complex. But one thing that may not be known is is that um it's again, this is right in the middle of town. This was called, this was Tunbridge Market uh in in days past, you know, years past, decades, hundred or fifty years ago. This was called Tunbridge Market um because of the mill, because of the blacksmith shop, because of the creamery right around the corner there on the main drag. But um but look at, look at that parcel, um of course, the river is running right on both the, he owns on both sides of that. But that, speaking of river access, I mean, that is um, that's a good chunk of um possibility there. Plus up the the uh the 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 northern part on the other side of mi- of Spring Road there on the mil- mill bridge, that that little section as well. Which are the falls, which I believe Hank was keeping up with um the FERC license. He wanted to produce power there, but I'm not sure the status of that now. But but that is, it's a really strategic piece of land um in the middle of town that I think, again, with a community trust involved. Could um uh I think I think it should be on 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 Tunbridge's radar, basically, to 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 if this comes on the market. To consider um what it would be for the town. Of course, the mill building is an, it's an amazing building. Some of you have probably been in it. I I have, I got a brief tour from Hank and um, you know, it has all the equipment to grind. Grind flour and to um, it's a gristmill and a sawmill. And reportedly, when Henry Swayze owned this in the nineties. He, somebody actually cut wood using the so the water power in that building. And so it's it's all intact, so it's, you know, it it seems like it should be a museum. It should be part of the, the Union Agricultural Society should own that because it could be a museum for them or something like that. It's it's amazing, the 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 equipment and the that it it's in good shape. Of course, the building, you know, it hasn't been cared for and that's a concern. Oh, here's the close up of the whole thing, but uh it's not, it's not cheap, uh that's for sure. We already saw that. Uh oh, we already saw these. Okay. Yeah, and here's just, here's just some detail of this of this, you know, Tunbridge Market area, as it was called. So again, these are just, um this is a summary of um some of the ideas. Attractions or ways, you know, that 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 the this sort of downtown area could be. Made more accessible to both um locals and to um and and to visitors alike. You know, it's just sort of, it's just sort of dreaming and thinking ahead, that kind of thing. And that is, that is it. Yeah. So I don't know what's next with with something like that, but. What do you guys think?
Michael, have you been working with Ian McKenzie on that ATV UTA and the four wheel drives? Cause those guys are pretty excited about. Making this a come to area.
No, I haven't. I haven't talked to anybody about that. I mean, in in terms of the Conservation Commission, we are are uh sort of drafting. Some thoughts about about the ATV.
Yeah, I know they're, they feel like they want to also enjoy this central Vermont. I was kind of shocked to. I happened to casually mention it to my nephew and he was, he wanted to talk to his Western Massachusetts group, club. They'd love to come here and save two hour drive to the northern part of New Hampshire. I'm not, I have an ATV. I'm not super excited about this.
Yeah, I think there's still a lot of discussion that has to be made.
I'd love to get a, love to get an electric one, but sort of out of my pay grade. But I think you 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 need to address that because that's um, there's a lot of them and they're gonna be pretty excited about coming here. I think it's gonna be a come to area.
So Jenna's, um well Jenna, one, uh if you wouldn't mind, you you have your your hands in this more than I do about the fe- federal money. And I know probably the others in the planning commission, I guess it's got its name changed from ARPA to something else I've heard recently. But I don't.
I was gonna say, there's, I mean, there's the ARPA money that's being paid out in the two payments. But there's, there's also money coming through, there will be infrastructure money coming through the bill that was passed. And I I'm not sure if that. That has a special name, I'm sure it does. That's the type of policy that's kind of um above my pay grade. But I mean, even outside of that money, USDA has been pushing for wastewater work. I know NBRC, the Northern Border Regional Commission, which is um a federal funder of economic development projects. Wastewater is like a bread and brother butter project for them. It's it's infrastructure. It's, you know, it's a huge challenge for a lot of towns. And I think there's really been a push to try and address it because in terms of like moving forward into the future and talking about economic development. Communities have to have the infrastructure to support it. Just like when we talk about, you know, the need to improve broadband and upgrade our transportation systems. You know, wastewater is just one of those things that falls into the same category, but just doesn't get nearly as much attention. So.
I don't know much about it, Jenna. Where would you put the wastewater plant?
Oh, and I. Yeah, that would be a question for the planning process. And, and, you know, same thing that like, you know, I'm, I'm not a municipal planner. I'm, I'm not a, a civil engineer, but I know enough that it's a challenge and that there's money available to help it with it. I, I honestly, I don't know where you would put it, but I feel like, you know, if you, if someone could look at the town and look at the, the parcel maps and think creatively about what you need in terms of capacity to support two or three commercial properties, you know, where does that exist in the community? How might you go about acquiring it, you know?
Putting it on the fairgrounds on that upper level, but I, I would think the fairgrounds would have a hard time with that because they may not be able to park their vehicles up there anymore. They're heavy trucks. So I don't know if they'd be willing to sell that to the town.
There is sloping land that's, uh, that's not parked on now. And I don't think we're talking about a, um, a wastewater treatment plant. We're talking about a leach field for a few buildings.
Yeah. Yeah, it wouldn't be like a municipal water treatment plant. It would be much, much smaller scale unless unless the entire village, I don't know if you could drive on it, but I don't think it would take up as much space. Unless, I mean, I don't know if the village center would be interested in a municipal system. I would assume that every property in town right now has their own system and you know, that, that's a whole different kind of discussion. But, um, you know, it feels like, it feels like it's a manageable scale to fit it somewhere in town. But, uh, yeah, that's, that's why the engineers make the big bucks.
I agree, yeah.
And, and this is something that has come up, uh, uh, in the past for the general store, for the store, because, and I, and I believe at that point they started talking to, to some, um, landowners nearby about it, uh, about, about putting a, um, a leach field in to increase the, the, the capacity for the, the store. But it, there, there was no follow-through on that, um, uh, in the end. But, but it was, um, it was raised before. There was, there was discussion. Uh, and it does seem like, yeah, it, it's, it's kind of like, it, it has to be addressed to, in order to, to, um, uh, if there's going to be any kind of, for, for growth, for some growth to happen in town, that this has to be addressed.
And there's, and, and I think, you know, Peachum is the one that comes to mind because I've done, probably done more septic systems in that town than I have in other places. But like the cafe, their leach field is on the adjacent property. They have an easement with that property owner because they didn't have room on their parcel to do it. The congregational church, which is kind of like two lots behind the cafe, they recently redid their lower level to put in a childcare center, like a, a twenty-slot childcare center. Um, and they, again, the, the church didn't have the septic capacity to be, to be able to do that. And so they actually ended up tying the, the church's system into the municipal system. And so it's that, again, that kind of public-private partnership, because obviously childcare is a really important need that they were able to address. And so I think the town was probably willing to make some concessions there because they, they wanted that to come, you know, into their village center to be able to support young families and, and fill that need. So you know, twenty years ago, neither of those things may have been possible. And the time was just, you know, right to have both of them move forward within the past five or six years. So it's, it's a question worth asking for Tunbridge.
And, and one of the things, um, I, I wondered about in terms of if the planning commission would be interested in this, if, if these ideas, uh, you know, uh, sparked any interest with you guys, um, I'm, I'm wondering if there, you know, if there's some way to, for, for, uh, maybe a couple of members of the planning commission to, to sort of like, poke around with, with some of these to learn more. I don't, and, and, um, you know, and, and I don't know if there's any interest in, in having outs, outside, people outside like myself, Jenna, to, to help out with, uh, doing any research and, trying to move some of these, these ideas along.
I like the sidewalk idea. I don't want to take on any more tasks in town, but you know, if you guys are gonna address that, I think that's a wonderful one to address. Also, um, changing the speed limit in town. You know, I know the next thing people say is you gotta enforce it, of course, but I think thirty-five is a little faster the activity we have going. Those two things would be a very interesting and doable project for you.
What about access to the, to the town forest?
I, I don't know anything about that. I mean, you'd have to talk to the landowners. That's a private thing, right?
Yeah. But there is, you know, as we know, um, from, from this exercise with trails and all that, there's been, um, quite a few suggestions for exploring the public-private partnerships. And, and that would be, that would be, um, that could be a first project, you know.
And I think something like even signage, like I love the idea of a kiosk, like something simple, like not even doing new projects, but acknowledging where there is existing trail systems, where there are existing things to do. Even publicizing when there's, you know, forest walks on Saturday, or I know there's been some great programs done in the past. Having a place so people know where to look for that information and, you know, people know how to access those resources. As someone who's relatively new to town, and I know I'm not alone, it, you know, those are helpful things. And those are probably a relatively light lift in the grand scheme of community and economic development conversations. It's not taking on new projects. It's just really enhancing the existing resources.
Well, this has been super and hugely appreciated. There's, anybody else have any other questions for Jenna or Michael or contribution to this discussion at this time? Oh, it sounds like this, this is a ripe discussion though for, for, as we start to move into our next phase of planning, it just, it's certainly timely. And, uh, you know, there are a number of pieces. I, I like the thought, Jenna, of the light lift and, uh, you know, low-hanging fruit often can start to generate more energy. So, um, I think you've brought a great, great list of projects here, um, that are worth exploring further. So hugely appreciate both of you carving out the time and, and, uh, this presentation.
Thank you.
Thanks. I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna sign off. I'm not sure if that's the end, but it was very nice to see you all, um, and, and Michael, I'll, you know, be in touch if there's anything I can help with. And, and I look forward to seeing you around in town as the weather improves. Yes, I know. Fingers crossed for some warmer weather ahead. Bye, all.
Thank you, Jenna. And thanks again, Michael. And thanks to everybody for coming out tonight. Uh, this will be, we will do this again in another month. And our next topic, I am blanking on right now, but we will be visiting a number of different topics as the course of the year goes on. And we will post the proceedings from this one on the town website and meeting minutes. And thank everybody for coming out. And Izzy, thanks you for hosting. And we will see you all soon.
Thanks, Rudy. Thanks, Izzy, for doing this.